Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the February twentieth twenty twenty four regular board meeting for the Mililani Maoka Launani Valley Neighborhood Board thirty five. At this time I call the meeting to order. Ask Scout. BSA Troop six six four to lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please rise for the presentation of the colors. Troop attention, color guard attention, color guard forward march. Mark time march. Left wheel march. Ready, halt. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, scout salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. Color guard forward march. Mark time march. Ready, halt. Color guard dismissed, you may be seated.
Okay, thank you, Troop six six four. Moving on to meeting decorum, vice chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, on behalf of Chair Hazama and your members of your Mililani Maoka and Launani Neighborhood Board. Again, we welcome all your feedback, your comment, your input from the community. We just ask a few things that if you want to be heard to at, to please raise your hand, be recognized by the chair, then he'll wave you to come up to the microphone. At that time, you can say what you need to say. For those joining us virtually, if you could just please have your microphone on mute, same thing, raise your hand and the chair will recognize you for your feedback. And then last, if we could ask if you could please, as best as you can, limit your comments and thoughts and feedback to about three minutes so we can get everyone. That's all. Thank you. Back to you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair. Moving on to monthly reports tonight, Honolulu Fire Department is online.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Can you guys see and hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
All right. My name is Chadwick Tam. I'm a firefighter one with the Honolulu Fire Department. These are the incident statistics for January two thousand twenty four. There are two structured fires, three nuisance fires, five activated alarms, no fires. As far as the emergency calls, we had eighty six medical calls, two motor vehicle collision calls dealing with pedestrians. We had five motor vehicle crashes. The safety tip, the fire safety tip for this month or last month is don't stall, call nine one one. Call nine one one right away when there's an emergency. Once the operator is on the line, speak clearly and provide an accurate description of the type of emergency and the location. Remember to remain calm. The operator may ask for additional information or provide instructions. If you find yourself in a spot where you do not have good reception for voice communication, such as if you're in an elevator or on a, on a hike, you can text your emergency to nine one one. If you don't know the passcode to unlock a cell phone, you can push the emergency button to unlock it and call nine one one. All right, if you guys have any questions, feel free to email the HFD's Community Relations Office at hfdnhb@honolulu.gov. Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, hold on. Any questions for the Fire Department this evening? Anyone online? Okay, I have one question. So maybe next month you can give us an update on when the Fire Department is anticipated to be completed with their investigation on the Maoka brush fires?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know you guys probably won't be done, but maybe we can get a timeframe from you guys next month. I'm sorry, April, April, we're recessed in March, so April.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night. Moving on to the Honolulu Police Department.
Good evening, board members and good evening, community members. My name is Tim Yenoma with the Honolulu Police Department. So my safety tip for the month, I just wanted to talk about is auto theft part two. So last month I talked about we, the police, our district, we saw an increase in auto thefts at the Wahoo and Schofield area and Wheeler Base. But island wide, we are seeing auto theft increase in Kia vehicles and Hyundai vehicles. Due to a TikTok trend that happened, I believe it was years ago where they, people taught, the video are, people in the video taught, are showing others how to hotwire a Kia and Hyundai. And that we have been seeing, especially in our district as well, using these stolen Kias or vehicles. They commit other crimes and usually they commit it with burglary, with a vape shop. So that's unfortunately, it happened in ours, in our district, it's happening island wide. So please, keep your vehicles locked. And if you have those old fashioned steering locks, please put that on your Kia or Hyundai vehicles. And if you do, if your vehicle does qualify, you can ask Hyundai to see if they can update the auto theft feature on your vehicle. And moving forward, I do want to say that we do have a neighborhood security watch citizens patrol walk happening in Mililani Maoka happening this Friday, February twenty three, two thousand twenty four at five o'clock. And the meeting spot will be at Calvary Chapel Church. So for those who don't know what a citizens patrol walk is, is basically, uh, community members coming together and walking around the community showing presence. So we're all, we provide fluorescent vests. And we just take a nice stroll. I say it was a nice lesson, and Anna came out and was a walk, was it hard or was it pretty good? It's a good walk, and just get to know your community, just show presence in your community so that if any criminal in the area does see us, it would kind of deter them from committing crime in that area. And we hope, our goal is to motivate and inspire other community members in the Maoka area and the lower Mililani area to get involved with the community. So that we can keep the entire Mililani safe and we can mitigate crime. So we are doing that this Friday at the Mililani Calvary Chapel Church in the Mililani Maoka area. Other than that, do I have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Police Department this evening? Anyone online? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Board of Water Supply, Kathleen.
Aloha. Happy Tuesday. No main breaks to report. I'm happy to report. And then just a reminder, we have our one hundred dollar toilet rebate for a limited time only. This will go through April eighteenth. I have some flyers over there on the table, so please help yourself. And at the last board meeting, Board Member Kue, who had talked about those sock barriers we put in front of storm drains. So I did get a response. I emailed it to her and copied your board chair. But I would like to read it for the public record. So the BWS will continue to notify its contractors to remove the storm sock barriers prior to a major storm coming through the island. We apologize that in this particular area along Rikau Street during the most recent heavy storm that was back in January, they were not removed. The contractor neglected to remove it. So one thing you can always do is call us and let us know that that's the case and then we'll get somebody out there right away. Moving forward, the communications team will work with our Capitol Project Division to ensure we all have updated storm information. However, as we have seen the past few years, rainy events can suddenly occur without any substantial warning. If that should occur, we ask that you call our BWS emergency phone at eight oh eight five five one five eight four eight to request help if you see flooding in a BWS construction area where the barriers are in place. We do not encourage the community to try and move them as they can be very heavy. However, if there is an immediate flood concern, we understand the need to move them before our crews can show up. We urge extreme caution and perhaps call HPD or HFD to assist until BWS can get there. Any other questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Board of Water Supply this evening? Anyone online? Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, aloha.
Aloha. Okay, next our military rep, Major. Good evening.
Good evening, Board Chair. Major Tony Hubner from one thirtieth Engineer Brigade. Just a couple of notes here. So first, for the job fair, US Army Garrison Hawaii is holding its next hiring fair on March nineteenth at the Mililani High School. It starts at zero eight thirty and will end at two P M. It's open to the public. There'll be job offers and provisional hiring the day of the job fair, opportunities in business operations and child use services. If you're interested, you can go to www.himwr.com. Click on the employment banner and you can learn of the openings. Kind of the next point here. So US Army Garrison published the February training advisory for Wahoo on thirty one January. If you have any questions or concerned, concerns about the, the training advisory, in which to be added to the distribution list to get updated information, you can call the community concern line, which is at eight oh eight seven eight seven fifteen twenty eight. Or you can email thegarrison@usag.hawaii.comrel@army.mil. Within that training advisory, there was a number of dates. Most of them have completed for February. I'll just highlight upcoming training advisory. So next weekend from twenty six through, not next weekend, it's next week. Twenty six through twenty nine February, from five A M. to eight thirty P M., there will be artillery and mortar live firing occurring. And then additionally, based on some of the training that occurred back in January and really at the beginning of this, this month, the Garrison has a separate note here they'd like to put out too. So the Garrison, US Army Garrison Hawaii would like to express their sincerest apologies for failing to timely notify the community of artillery and live fire mortar noises that occurred in January. There were some unexpected same day requests for additional training based on the, the training objectives for the units that were occupying the land. And this included, you know, evening and night fire training. Additionally, you know, the winds, the cloud cover, there was a front that came in there that, that last weekend in January. Definitely increased the noise. I live down in YPO and I heard it down there. So, but they're aware of that and they're gonna do, they're gonna make every attempt to communicate any last minute changes in their training advisories. And if you're on that disre list, you should get the up to date information. They do believe in training and being mindful of our neighbors. With that being said, there are multiple reasons why training occurs throughout the night and goes even into the early mornings. Getting proficiency at night takes time. And when we do complex live fire training, it takes time and we also have to be safe with that. Live fire training during night doesn't start at the very beginning of the evening. There's normally multiple iterations that occur to ensure that before the unit or the soldiers move on towards a more complicated and dangerous live fire, that they're, they're through the gates. So it generally is multiple iterations going through the same conditions or as close as possible before they move on to that live fire gate. So that's starting with just dry, like nothing on them. Going into blank firing, when we do blank firing, there is no substitute for artillery mortars. So they'll use the small arms blanks, but they're still simulating any indirect or any artillery or mortar fire. And then once they pass that gate, that's when they actually can execute that more complex live fire. And that's where, you know, in terms of the large explosions and mortars, the artillery, that's where, and when it's occurring. And based on that timing, you know, ensure that we have safety and we're moving through those gates in a safe manner. You know, it's, it's not really time based, it's conditions based. So the unit's doing well, it could be earlier in the evening, but if things aren't going as well and they need some extra reps or other conditions change, it could be earlier in the morning. Again, if you have any questions or concerns in terms of training advisory, reach out to the Garrison Community Concern Line. Again, at eight oh eight seven eight seven fifteen twenty eight or usag.y.comrel@army.mil. Any questions?
Okay, any questions for the Army this evening? Anyone online? So this kind of bleeds into our next board business anyway, Major, so you can just stay up there regarding the training. You know, I got a lot of complaints and I, I know, in honesty, I did, I did call PAO for twenty fifth and they received a lot of complaints too from the surrounding communities. I don't think I have a problem with you guys notifying the public. We do have a problem with understanding why you have to exercise or fire like in the early morning hours. So that, especially, you know, the, like you live in YPO, people from Pearl City said that they, you know, they also complained as well. We don't necessarily have any issues and we understand the requirement for training. Well, just trying to understand why they need to train past midnight to like two o'clock in the morning when you have surrounding communities around you that you know you're gonna, they're gonna hear the sound. So. Like I said, I, I think you guys got the word out, but as far as community engagement and figuring out what the community, you know, was gonna say about certain times of practice, I think is, is something that the twenty fifth needs to understand, I think. And I think you guys do. I don't understand what compels you guys to have to do that. So. I mean, we have a hard time explaining to our, you know, people that live, that live here that you're gonna be practicing from one A M. in the morning till, you know, lunchtime, which is fine. See, and I asked the brigade PAO why they couldn't limit hours to more reasonable times. They could tell us like, you know, you know, like, okay, fine, practice. You know, practice from during the day and then maybe till ten, eleven o'clock at night and then stop. You know, but I guess if you guys are saying that you have to utilize those times, then, and this is, you know, we're not blaming you because you're just a messenger. It's above your pay grade, but I, I think the community would like some input. At least when you guys have to go at those, those kinds of times and notifying people is one thing, but you guys know that you guys are gonna get complaints because you do already, right? So since we're on board business A now, I, I think the proper action is maybe to ask the board for a motion then to allow the board chair to write to the congressional delegation to have them work with the army leadership to figure out how to better address training times for the brigade. I'm gonna need a motion from the board.
How do you wanna, how do you want it to listen? I'll be glad to do it, but tell me, tell me what you want me to say.
No, just say that you make a motion that the board send a letter of concern to the congressional delegation.
All right, I move it.
Do you have a second? Seconded by Vice Chair. Okay, board members, we're in discussion. Any further discussion from the board or anybody in the public? Online? Yeah, go ahead, please.
Wow, it must be.
Can you use the mic?
When I, when I heard it, I didn't know what it was, but I thought, wow, they must, there must be a reason why they're doing this because we are, it is, I think, a time of war that people don't realize that is happening. And, and it's preparedness is what I, I thought. So if it could help our troops be prepared, then, you know, that's, I mean, we, we live around all pieces, you know, so, and I'm a military brat, so. Yeah, I was thinking, what is the reason? It must be important, you know, for them to do that. So that's what I, that, that's the stance I took. It was very loud though, just like.
I have a nine, I have a nine months old and even I heard it down in YPO, so.
Okay, board, any other discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, Toby, just a question. I, you know, this is the military, someone's in charge, someone makes the decision. So if you could find out who that decision maker is, you know, whether it's a brigade commander, the division commander,
Absolutely, so.
but there has to be someone that we pin this question on and we hold that person in command responsible.
Yep, absolutely. I send a report and it goes straight to the C G. So all your questions, all your comments, it wrapped up and it goes straight to the C G and we'll look into it.
Okay. Any other questions online? Anyone? Okay, if not, um, the motion is to, I guess, rather a letter to Congress to work with army leadership to figure out if they can work out some kind of time. Time normalcy regarding exercises. Do you have any objections to the motion? Anyone online? Any abstentions? No motions, no abstentions, the motion carries by unanimous consent. I'll thank you, Major. Thanks. Okay, moving on to item B on the board business tonight. We have the update on the use of the Mililani Maoka, I'm sorry, Mililani Middle School parking lot for the park users. So D O E facilities? Or you can all come up at one.
Good evening, Board Chair, members of the board. My name is Roy Ikid. I'm from the Department of Education Facilities Branch. And here to, by the board with an update on the agreement between the City and County of Honolulu and the Department of Education for the use of parking for that Mililani Mililani Maoka District. Okay, so, um, this is a matter of history. So several years ago, there was a desire to remove Mililani Middle from multi-track to single track. And part of that, the department under, took a study to see what it would take to actually expand facilities so that we could accommodate a single track rather than again going to the, the, the multi-track curriculum. Part of that required additional classroom space as well as parking. Parking was, I believe it was a code requirement of the City and County of Honolulu. And so we, of course, the footprint of the middle school is such that we didn't have enough space to accommodate all the code requirements, the building itself, the new classroom building, as well as the additional parking space that was needed. So we approached the Department of Parks and Recreation about the possibility of acquiring a portion of the park space for purposes of that school expansion so we could again eventually go single track. That took a number of, I think at least a couple of years, I think of actually negotiations with the city. And at some point, it was agreed that we would go through a process, friendly combination, because there was some issues on title that needed to be addressed. And so we went through that process, acquisition occurred. Meanwhile, concurrent to that, we, it was design and construction of the facilities that you see there today. And part of that discussion was what would eventually resulted in a memorandum of agreement for the use of that parking space by the community. And what we're in discussions right now with the Department of Parks and Recreation, the Department of Education is, is negotiating that agreement on public use of that parking lot that was constructed. What was, I think, informally discussed over time by the previous principal was that it would be managed through a use of facilities process that is managed by the school level. And that way, the school would have ultimate control over, you know, so that their function, their daily operations, school operations would have precedent over nonprofit, let's say, coming in for some community activity. First and foremost, we wanted to be able to accommodate the school operations. And so we have a mechanism to do that, but it's called the use of facilities process. That again, the principal has the authority to actually review the applications and will process the access to any public facility. Could be a building, parking lot, could be an open field. So today, you know, we just had a, a meeting with Parks and Rec, I think it's now just over a week ago, and we're in negotiations of that agreement right now to, to put that in writing. And of course, it'll reference the authority of the school administration today, ten years from now, whenever it is to have the last say as far as, you know, public access for the parking lot. Yeah, we're here. I have a member of my staff here to talk about this, the details, if we need be, otherwise the principal's here to answer questions about that process, that use of facilities process.
Okay, thank, thank you for being here. Have any questions from anybody online? Anybody? So the M O A is still being worked out with the county, right? So it's not, it's not executed, not agreed on yet.
Not executed yet. We're going to be scheduling a meeting with them before the end of the month where we'll have a draft to be reviewed by the city.
Okay, so, and I understand, I think I understand pretty much what you want the process to be. However, so I have the agreement with the state, the original agreement back in twenty sixteen. So on page five, paragraph nine, it specifically identifies the use of the state parking lot. And it basically quotes, "The state agrees to grant to county a license to permit property users to use the new parking lot on the premises upon completion of the project." Subject to mutual agreement of terms and conditions to be defined in a memorandum of agreement, M O A, which you guys are working on. So if I read this agreement correctly, it says that the county has the right to permit users to use the parking lot. So how are you guys working around like that issue? Because according to the agreement, it says the, my understanding is that the state would then somehow grant the county use of the facility or in this case, a parking lot.
I, I wasn't involved with that discussion back in twenty sixteen, but from what I understand, the discussion back then was, you're correct, I think, in that, that, that portion of that agreement states that, yeah, it will be granted to the county to control access for that facility. I think what was going on back then was, there was a question about who would have ultimate control. I mean, of course, because it was constructed for purposes of accommodating the school to go single track, we wanted to accommodate the, the operation, the daily operations of, of the school itself, first of all. Secondly, I think the discussions, my understanding of the discussions with Parks and Rec back then was that they didn't want the responsibility of managing that on a day to day basis, monitoring and allowing access and whatever. Whereas the department has a process already, that use of facilities process where, I think for the use of its cafeteria, for example, for a public gathering like this, the school would have, if barring school activity at night, they would be able to grant access or use of a facility like this secondary to a school function. And so it was sort of, it's sort of evolved, if you will, going from what you stated in the agreement to, okay, the D O E will use that mechanism, the use of facilities mechanism so that, again, public use would be secondary to daily operations of, and sometimes there are school activities at in the evening.
I mean, I understand the school's position. The problem you guys have is this, this agreement is binding to the state and the county. So if you guys had any issues, you guys should have resolved it before the document was executed. Now you guys are stuck, I mean, kind of, to figure out how you guys are gonna get this done.
Yeah, and I think we've, I mean, in the discussion we just had last week, I mean, there was, it seems to be mutual agreement by the city and the department on going down this path of using the use of facilities mechanism to grant public use. So I think they thought, I mean.
Irregardless of what happens, the state's policies, all MOAs have to go through the Attorney General's office anyway.
That's right.
And the county is probably gonna have to pass theirs to court counsel.
That's right.
I know Kerry's on the line, so you guys are gonna have to have both of those agencies look at this executed agreement.
Right.
And figure out if what your process is, is going to comply with the agreement. And I'm not an attorney, but I think you guys are gonna have some issues to work out because if you're asking the park user to apply for the application, the park user is not a county agent, they're not a county employee, right? They're just a resident of the City and County of Honolulu. So you guys are gonna have to work that out.
Yeah, I, I think for like, I mean, what, what we've been talking, sorry, talking with Parks and Rec about was, what we're talking about is in the context of large organized events. Soccer games, craft fairs and, and things like that. I, for day to day, I don't know, just, you know, you wanted to take my son to the park to.
Well, yeah, that kind is not, but I, I think what the parks are doing now, they are permitting, they are permitting use of that park now for games, you know, organized games like football games, soccer games. So the parking and the usage is picking up around that area. You know, so I think some of the smaller, what we may call smaller events, like a football game during the whole day and stuff. I think the county is gonna wanna have those users possibly start using some kind of alternative parking site. And I did talk to the county parks administrator and. They make, they were considering as part of the. Permit use for the park to require some of the larger events to also be able to, have to use the parking lot instead of street parking. So. Yeah, I'm kind of, I mean, this is still evolving, unfortunately, after 2016, all this time. The other, the other thing that I wanted to make sure, and I know I talked to the principal, was. Whatever you guys work out, I think for the park users, we wanted to make sure that there was no cost to them to use the parking lot.
Yes, yes.
Because I know you guys don't charge a lot, but I think in the spirit of the agreement. And the agreement between the county and the state when it happened, that was never the intention to, you know, charge people to use that parking lot.
Sure, that was in fact, this point of discussion, this in our most recent discussion with Parks and Rec, and so we are looking at a way of waiving that. So it made it, yeah, Parks Department made it clear to us that. Yeah, of the community desire for free use.
Okay.
Parking lot, so.
Any other questions? Anybody online? I do appreciate you guys coming out here. Anybody else want to say anything from DOE or? Okay, so, I guess. As the MOA comes forward and you guys figure this out, I guess we'll get additional updates from the department on how it's going. Yeah.
I want to reassure you that, to your point though, yeah, you're right, we, we are going to our AG once the, we have an agreement in principle on the MOA itself, going to the AG and court counsel for, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department.
Yeah, 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 so I mean, the AG signed the original agreement back in 2016 anyway, along with the superintendent. And the, and the county, I think the managing director signed it. But yeah, so. We gotta, we gotta figure this out. And just for record, when this whole issue initially came up, when the plans were brought up and the funding was being contemplated. You know, this board did bring up like, what is the mechanism that you guys are going to do this with? Because I know it wasn't going to be. Simple, right? Because you guys have your facility, use facility process, right? But yet. We're talking about, you know, the park parking lot and the dedication of the land or the transfer of the land from the county to the state, right? So. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our last update, so our last board business tonight. 2024 legislative priorities. So I will let. Yeah, Representative Matsumoto, why don't you come up?
Good evening, Chair Hazama, members of the board, members of the public. I have a lot for you tonight.
I have time categories.
Pretty good.
I got it all.
Good update.
And I'll have for everybody else also. So when Chair Hazama asked for the broad updates, the first thing that I wanted to give to everybody is, we had mentioned last month about my pre-session survey. And those results. So the first handout you have. So the first handout that we have. The extra ones can go over there. Okay. Perfect. And it's all available online. Look at that, we're on it. So we talked about the pre-session survey. So the first handout is all of the survey results, so you can go through. So my, my staff and I put this together. You have basically the summary, the methodology of how we conducted our survey, the survey questions, and of course, the results. So you can be looking through. Those issues. And so the top five issues that came out of this survey, first was cost of living. Second was homelessness. Third, crime. Fourth was affordable housing. And then fifth was government corruption and government transparency. And so when we're looking for broad topics, those were the main topics that came out. But. Because this is also the Milani Maoka Neighborhood Board, we also broke out those results by area. So the second survey you have is the Milani Maoka results. So we split it out with Mililani and Mililani Maoka. And so those. It pretty much had the same topics, just at a different amount, right? Cost of living clearly is the most important area. When people were looking at that, and then homelessness, crime was third. So again, a little bit in the shifts, but the top issues were still the top issues. And so those would be, if we're looking at really, really broad topics, those would be the areas that I looked at. And so. The reason I do this survey is, is that's also how I build my bill package. So all of the bills that I introduced this year are on those five areas. And we also have a sixth area, which I'll get into in my update, but that was constituent requests, because we had some people reach out for bill requests, things that they thought were important that didn't quite fit into those categories. And so with that, I don't know, Chair Hazama, if you wanted to ask questions regarding these areas, if you wanted me to go into a little more detail, but you said to keep it broad.
Yeah, so just in general, so just to confirm, so cost of living. Homelessness, crime, affordable housing.
Affordable housing and government transparency.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So you're gonna, you basically craft your legislation around those.
Those five areas.
Top priority areas.
Yes.
Okay.
So I can, I'm not going to go into more detail until we get to maybe the legislative update section. But then we can see, I have about three to four bills for each of those topic areas.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
And then also I'll, I'll add, I sit on the housing and the transportation and the legislative management committee. So of course, housing, we look into housing, transportation. And legislative management, we look at a lot of those government transparency issues on how we run the legislature.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Representative Peruso, are you online?
Aloha, Chair. Can you folks hear me?
Yes.
Aloha, this is Yvonne. Filling in on behalf of Representative Peruso, she sends her regards. I was hoping that I could share my screen, would that be okay with you folks? Okay. I just have a brief update regarding Representative Peruso's. Legislative updates and some highlights. Okay, so these bills that I'm going to go through, I'm just going to go through five main ones, but they're highlighted in her newsletter as well. And I can send a digital copy to you folks to add to the Google Drive. But because Representative Peruso sits on the higher, the Committee on Higher Education and Technology, many of her bills. That are part of her legislative priorities deal with public education and funding for public education. So starting off with HB 1537. Which proposes amendments to the state constitution and authorizes the legislature to establish the surcharge on residential investment properties. This bill has been moving along through the House and it is still waiting, hearing with the Committee on Finance. And I can share this presentation as well, so that I'm not just reading through the slides. Another one that's part of her legislative priorities is HB 1534, which establishes a teacher apprenticeship program. To be administered by the Hawaii Teacher Standards Board to recruit, support, develop, and retain teachers for Hawaii public schools. This one is also awaiting a hearing with the Finance Committee. The next bill, HB 1535, provides scholarships for unmet needs of qualified undergraduate students that's enrolled in any four-year university, that's part of the University of Hawaii. This one is also awaiting a hearing with the Finance Committee. And then lastly, we have the summer tuition program. Which is HB 1779, that aligns tuition, residential tuition rates for the summer semester with the residential tuition rates for the spring and fall semesters. So these are tuition rates that. Students. Students of the seven University of Hawaii community colleges have to pay money, go to those colleges. Not relating so much to education, but relating to more community concerns, is Bill HB. 2721, which is dealing with wildfire protection. So this relates to establishing a fireshed partnership program, very similar to the. Mountain watershed programs that have been successful and well-established. So this would appropriate funds to create a fireshed coordinator to collaborate with landowners and managers. So this, along with a lot of other bills, are highlighted in her newsletter, but I just wanted to highlight those five and just keep it short. But if you folks have any questions about the whereabouts of where these bills are in the process, feel free to send me an email. I'll share my email at the end of this short presentation as well. In the newsletter, you'll also see that we're going to be hosting. A disaster preparedness informational briefing, talking about some of the fire shed work that we're going to be doing, and I'll share a little bit more in the legislative updates. But this is a Zoom meeting that's happening in two weeks. So. If you're able to join online, we highly encourage you to, to participate. And I will stop for now, but if you have any questions about any of the bills, please let me know.
Okay, so can you send that to us? And I'm going to assume that the first four that you covered are your priorities.
Yes. Well, the first five, but yeah.
Five, okay. All right, send that, send that to us. Thank you. Representative Lachica.
Hello, good evening, Chair Hazama, Vice Chair Tomashiro, members. I'm passing out my February newsletter, which includes my legislative package, and it's also uploaded on the Google Drive for folks online. So if you open it up to this page. It is. I guess it's kind of arranged by priority, but as you all know, I got appointed as Vice Chair of Education this year, so a lot of my bills has to do with improvements to our public education system, and as you very well know, I've been very vocal about our school bus driver shortage issues. And so the first two bills, which are still moving. Have to do with both the establishment of comprehensive, the first is comprehensive standards for the DOE. So in the event of any cancellation or modification to a school bus route, they're required to work with the community, get feedback. As well as establish an appeals process in, if there are communities that feel that they are, it's a, you know, the cancellations would fairly unfairly burden them. The second one is, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so can I keep it at a broad, yeah, broad level?
Okay, so the first two bills have to do with school bus service improvements and addressing our school bus driver shortage. Homelessness encampments is really direct, direct action on the Kipapa Gulch encampment that we had and our very good collaboration with Department of Transportation, as well as the US Army Garrison Hawaii. So this is still moving and they are broadening it, broadening it to include other military installations. So local school meals is something I'm very proud of to partner with Mililani High School students on. And so we've narrowed the scope, because initially it would have looked at a plant-based option for one day a week for all the public high schools, but. Because it's really Mililani High School students that worked with our office to draft this bill together, and they've submitted like over 200 pieces of testimony supporting this, we're going to pilot the program at Mililani High School. And then the last one is, it's a, it's really on the, it's called deepfakes in elections, but with the rise in artificial technology and the use of artificial intelligence. There's a lot of misinformation that's being spread out there. So deepfakes are basically the use of somebody's voice, image, or audio, or likeness in another person's, like, you know. Yeah, video, like using of my image or likeness in another, with another person. So it can be manipulated to basically spread misinformation. But my entire bill package is here, most of them are still moving. And then happy if you can support basically education, homelessness. And I guess election integrity for the last one. Oh, school, yeah, school meals.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator De La Cruz, you have a rep on for Senator? Nope. Okay. Okay. So board members, the reason why we have this on our agenda is, as you know, the neighborhood board only meets once a month. And we often get requests from our elected officials to submit testimony to support some of the bills that are currently still moving or are active. Unfortunately, I am not able to do that unless the board has taken a position on that particular issue. So in light of that, I asked the legislators to bring up their broad categories of what they intend to identify as their priorities this session. Assuming the board approves and supports these initiatives, that will give the board and myself latitude to submit testimony at the appropriate time. That the, the war, the bill is to be heard. Now, all the bills have been decked already, so as far as the House side and the Senate side, they've all been submitted. But the ones that will continue to move forward are the ones that are going to be crossing over to the other chamber. And at which time, they will be heard in the opposite chamber, and that'll determine whether that bill actually, actually moves on for approval and signature. Also, board members, are there any questions or discussions regarding any of the priorities that the legislators have brought up this evening? Anybody online? We're hearing none, we have a motion then to support the. Support the priorities of the legislature this session. Move it. So moved by Alice, do I have a second? Oh, okay. Any further discussion, board members? Anyone from the public? Anyone online? Hey, seeing none, any objections to supporting and adopting the legislative priorities for the 2024 session? Any objections? Anyone online, any abstentions? Seeing none, the motion carries by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to any residents or community concerns this evening. Do we have any residents or community concerns this evening that are not on the agenda? Anyone online? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Yes, go ahead, come on.
Hello, Chair, members of the board. I just wanted to make a quick comment about that piece of legislation that would have established a surcharge on residential investment properties. My concern is that, you know, property taxes are under the purview of the city and county. And that I'm just worried that with the state kind of having their hands in taxes and property taxes, that might be a concern. Also, I mean, there's no doubt that education should be fully funded. Absolutely, I agree with that. The cake here are really important. But something to consider is that some walk-ups are investment properties, right? People were, where people rent affordable, you know, housing. And so these could be worth upwards $3 million, and ultimately, the people who'd be affected by. The surcharge, or in other words, a tax on these properties would be those renters. So I just wanted to. Talk about that a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other residents or community concerns this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to our elected officials' report. Office of Governor Josh Green, uh, Mel.
Hi, good evening, Chair Hazama and members of the Neighborhood Board. Melanie Martin, Governor's representative. First item to report is that the governor recently released one million dollars for, in CIP funding for restriping and resurfacing of the driveway at Millilani Ike. That was released on February fourteen. The second item I have to report is that we just opened another Kahali in Kalihie called Ko'oh Kahileo, and it's the third Kahali to be opened. The governor issued today an executive order to make Hawaii a trauma-informed state. And with that, he sent out a memo to all state employees asking them to complete a survey on uh the quality of life and well-being of state workers, me being one of them. And I know that there are others in the audience tonight. Anyway, so that's what he did today. He issued that executive order. And then the last thing I have to report is that Governor Green will be out of town visiting Washington DC for the governor, National Governors Association. So he'll be leaving on February twentieth. With that, I, that completes my report, and I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mel. Any questions for the Governor's Office this evening? Anyone online? Oh, Stephen, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Ms. Martin, can you elaborate on the the trauma-informed state that uh Governor Green mentioned?
So in twenty twenty-two, the governor established an office of loneness and resilience. And the governor is a big proponent of well-being, wellness, resilience, and a lot of individuals, especially in light of the Maui wildfires, they're experiencing a lot of trauma. So this executive order is not in light of the wildfires, it's just part of his initiative to bring attention to the fact that we need more trauma-informed care training, as well as we need to bring that to the forefront to en- ensure that our, all of our state, as well as our state employees, receive the training that will be necessary to promote well-being and wellness and and resilience. And that's what he did with this executive order. So he issued it today.
Thank you. Um, question I have, since this is a state executive order, so is this going to also affect county? Like, we have seen quite a bit of violence happening recently and HPD responding to that. And there's been words about other type of uh uh for any other reason, a caretaker, someone to assist um the police department, but that's a county function. Was there something that uh the state may do to assist uh the county, such as HPD, in handling um people that are perhaps have mental illnesses? Because we've seen two. Now, the state gives a, gives a, an executive order. How is that going to affect the county, or is that going to affect the county? How can we get that support to our uh HPD officers?
I'm not sure what the relationship would be with respect to trauma-informed care as it relates to the counties. It is an executive order, so it is a state initiative. However, I believe that through this media attention, as well as bringing it to the forefront within the state, then the counties may follow suit. And I can follow up on that for you to see what the counties are doing. I would certainly hope that HPD, Honolulu Police Department, they have their own trauma-informed training to, and also for their officers as well as their staff. And I can follow up on that too, if you'd like me to. However, that is the county function.
Yeah, because uh Governor Green issued it, it seemed to me that a lot of times when these type of things happen, there may be a funding source to help support county if and as required to support the initiative of the governor.
Well, I don't know if there are.
Follow up on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, I will. Yeah, so I don't, I'm not certain about any funding, but I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if you have any other questions for the Governor's Office this evening? Anyone? Okay, thank you, Mel. Okay, moving on to Office of Congressman Case Nester. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Hazama, members of the board, as well as those listening online, uh including their commissioner there. Um, the congressman in the chat, I put in his uh Neighborhood Board Report for the first quarter. I want to just quickly go over that. What he does is he refers to his end-of-the-year report for the year twenty twenty-three, which you can go to his website, case dot house dot gov uh to take a look at that if you wish. Uh, he did mention the uh talk stories or town halls, if you will, that uh were held in the first week of January. And uh for those that attended uh the talk story at Millilani Maokel Mhji School, and thank you, uh Commissioner, and other members of the board did sit in on that uh talk story on January fourth in the cafeteria, yeah? Uh, it's been a while since I last reported to the board. I think it was back in October, so I'm gonna go over just quickly what uh has occurred since then. On December eighth, the congressman announced the winner of his app challenge, which he holds uh each year for uh high school and middle school students in his first congressional district. The winner yet again comes from the Dream House Charter School in Eba Beach. This time is a young woman by the name of Jalen Rabago, that won uh first place in that uh app challenge contest. Uh, on December fifteenth, the congressman announced his nominations to the four service academies. So that um Annapolis, West Point, and the Air Force Academy, as well as the Merchant Marine Academy can take his nominations into consideration. I wanted to say that two students from Millilani were nominated. Tyler Ishikawa to West Point. And Alexia Kramer to the Naval Academy at Annapolis. So two students from the Millilani area nominated by the congressman. Um, congressman is in town. House is in recess for a couple of weeks. And so uh he's busy uh with what's referred to as district work. Uh, yesterday, he did um attend an event. I'm sorry, no, that was actually Sunday. Um, attended an event uh which featured um the actor George Takei. Uh, it was for um the commemoration of what's referred to as the Day of Remembrance, the Day of Remembrance. Um, this is the day that um people wanted to not forget what happened with the imprisonment of Japanese Americans during World War Two. Uh, Mr. Takei is a someone who likes to speak out to make sure that doesn't happen again. Um, and this week, uh he'll be, Congressman Case will be doing uh several other um meetings and events. Uh, maybe doing a site visit. I'll be accompanying him to Papa Colea to talk to the people there about their issues. Um, he's going to be attending uh several site visits along with the US Department of Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg, who's on Maui uh today and tomorrow. On Thursday, the secretary will be visiting some of the infrastructure projects that the federal government is helping to fund, including the rail project, the uh airports, namely, um, you'll be looking at what is being done at uh Daniel K in No Way International Airport. And uh groundbreaking for the Kapalama Container Terminal on Thursday. As the chairman, as you know, the Honolulu Harbor is critical, a lifeline. More than eighty, closer to ninety percent of our goods are imported via shipping, yeah? And uh, one last thing, uh, the congressman released what's referred to as a wildfire guide, given what occurred, not just uh with the Lahaina. He is mindful of what occurred uh in the mountains above Millilani Maokha. So he released a wildfire guide. What he's trying to do is to um work with the state and local leaders, not just in government, but nonprofit, non-governmental organizations, I should say, to prevent something like this from happening again. So um one of the things in his wildfire guide, he points out to our, the three federal agencies that might be helpful in our efforts. Uh, that would be the Departments of Interior, Agriculture and Homeland Security. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, what I could do is I could um actually um uh put a reference to that wildfire guide in the chat for those who might be interested in taking a look at it. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, open to any questions you may have?
Thank you, Nester. Any questions for Congressman Case's office this evening? Anyone online? Okay, thank you, Nester.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, moving on to Mayor Blangiarde's office, uh, Carrie?
Good evening, Chair Hazama, uh, good evening.
Uh, Carrie, I think you need to unmute.
Pardon me?
Go ahead.
I'll start over. Good evening, Chair Hazama, uh, members of the board, all members of the public. Carrie Castle, Deputy Director with Budget and Fiscal Services Department, representing Mayor Blangiarde this evening. Um, a couple of um pieces of information I wanted to share, um, exciting that for the third year in a row, um, the city and county of Honolulu has been named um America's, one of America's best state employers in the state by Forbes Magazine. So this is for twenty twenty-four. This is, makes the third year in a row that the city has been named um one of the top employers. And we're definitely hiring, and so we invite the public uh to join us in um, you know, in um serving the community in various capacities. Um, the second piece of news that I uh wanted to share was that the Honolulu Zoo for the first time has been nominated as a candidate for the Best Zoo in America by USA Today. And uh a panel of industry experts um selected Honolulu as one of the America's top twenty zoos in running to be selected as best zoo in the country. So from now till March fourth, um, I invite everyone to um go to honoluluzoo.org. And you can vote for uh, you know, putting your vote on a daily basis. You can vote as, as once a day up through again, uh, March fourth uh to get uh Honolulu Zoo recognized as the top zoo in the country. Um, I've been uh, you know, voting every day. I think right now we are number four out of twenty. So, you know, with all of the public's help, I'm sure we can get to number one. Um, as far as uh departmental issues, so um following up on four items, um, the first item being the illegal parking and traffic. So residents reported that the red paint along Makai, Makaika, Makai Kai, sorry, uh, street at the intersection of Anna Maokua Drive, uh designated no parking zones, as these are bus stops. Um, these red uh paint has faded. And what we, what the community is finding is that um drivers are illegally parking here, which impacts the traffic and the safety. Um, our Department of Transportation Services has submitted a work order for this um issue to re, to uh be resolved by painting the faded curbs red at the, at these bus stops. So again, the work order has been submitted by the Department of Transportation Services. Um, on item number two, um, there was a request for red curbs at the Millilani Maokha Park and Ride. Um, so residents requested that the curb be painted red at the Millilani Maokha Park and Ride. Again, because people are parking there and it blocks the handiedance and others from accessing the designated handicap ramp. Um, our Department of Transportation Services again uh will hire a contractor to expedite the painting of the curb painting it red. On completion of the curb uh and completion of the red curb painting is estimated to be completed by the end of March uh twenty twenty-four, so next month. Um, regarding item number three, sidewalks are uplifting along Mahiu Street. And residents reported that the sidewalks along Mahiu Street is in need of repairs as the tree roots have caused significant damage to the sidewalk leading to accidents and injuries. Um, so our Department of um Design and Construction was uh issued this particular uh um problem. And they reached out to our Department of Planning and Permitting, who um did a site inspection at the Kapoli, Kapoli Street um on February sixteen. And a work order was issued to our Department of Facilities Maintenance to correct it. Um, so DFM, uh, our Department of Facilities Maintenance um has put in a service request uh to install a temporary patch to the damaged sidewalk areas along Mahiu Street um as an appropriate fix to mitigate the potential tripping hazards on the uh sidewalk to be repaired. Um, our Department of um part uh planning and permitting is scheduled to do a reinspection on Ohi Street. Um, they want to verify that the uplifts are caused by city streets and not private resident sorry, by city trees and not by private resident trees. Um, in the meantime, again, uh, DFM will be um fixing these um, these uh sidewalks that have um, you know, uplifted by, by the roots. Last item, uh, there was a question brought up uh last month of regarding our wastewater. And um, so member uh, Board Member Rogers asked if the wastewater is going to good use after treatment by the wastewater facilities. Um, so our um Department, Department of Environmental Services um treats wastewater for disposal to meet standards as they're set by the US Environmental Protection Agency and the State's Department of Health. About fifteen of the one hundred one million gallons per day of wastewater are collected, and it's currently treated to a Department of Health standards for unrestricted use of recycled water. And we use this water for irrigation of the eight public golf courses, parks, um road medians, and also agriculture. The use of the recycled water for non-potable uses such as these means that portable water is not utilized um for, for these means, and instead is conserved for very important drinking water supply. Um, the EMB has several projects in the works to expand the production and reuse of the recycled water around the county. Um, I'll take any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Any questions for the mayor's office this evening? Um, anyone online?
So Carrie, I have a question about Mahiu Street. I'm not familiar with those other two streets that they looked at.
Okay.
Um, but on Mahiu Street going north. But on Meheu Street going northbound, which is up, you know, I, I think they tried to patch it already, and the patches come out, but that's how bad the trees are. So, you know, patching it again isn't gonna cut it.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if they're reporting that the patch is a temporary fix until they get the contract issued to actually repair the sidewalks completely? Or is that their response to, is that their permanent fix is to try and patch it again? Because it's not gonna work.
No, it is an interim fix, Chair. And after that, it'll go to our Department of Design and Construction.
Okay, so for on Meheu Street, I can guarantee you that those are all city trees. Because they're all on the, they're all on the roadside of the, the street side of the sidewalks.
Okay, so according to DPP, they indicated that they were gonna re-inspect Ohi Street and determine if those trees that caused the uplifts are city trees or resident private trees.
Okay, well, if you can get those other two streets, other than Meheu, to, to Dylan, and I'll, I'll go and take a look when I get some time. But I, I know Meheu Street, definitely, those are city trees, so.
Okay, apparently, they went to Kapalani Street and Ohi Street, did an inspection on Kapoli Street.
Okay, that's a little bit further to.
Yeah, so it is in our report, and I'd be happy to, you know, take your comments after you've had a chance to take a look. We can follow up.
Okay, so I can verify with you whether those trees are actually city trees or, or not, once I take a look at them.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the mayor's office this evening? No? Okay, thank you, Carrie, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Council District Eight, Jamie?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Jamie Shadel from Councilmember Val Okimoto's office. Council met two weeks ago in committees. There's a new bill, Bill 64, which replaces the Bill 10. That's that comprehensive review of the entire land use ordinance. So at that last planning and, and the economy meeting, they talked about residential uses, and then next month, they're gonna talk about, I'm not sure if it's commercial or agriculture. So next Wednesday is a full council meeting. The honorary certificate starts at nine AM. We're gonna be honoring some students from Mililani Middle School at the full council meeting to start at 10 AM. I did believe, I do believe I did follow up with Chair Hazama. I forwarded a response from DTS regarding the sign that keeps on getting whacked in front of the fire station, so they're gonna make some adjustments over there. We also met with DDC Director Hakumillas on Monday, last Monday, to talk story about the, the resurfacing of the streets in Maoka. He didn't have a firm start date for construction and actually digging into the ground, but kind of tying into what you're talking to Carrie about the trees in that project. They're gonna work with Parks and Division of Urban Forestry, because a lot of that roots coming into the street. So that's our understanding why some of the planning and design is taking a little longer than usual, and they're not digging up the road yet. But they'll coordinate with us and, so we can give you updates and people aren't in convenience with road closures and whatnot over there. I'll stand on the written report pending any questions.
Any questions for Councilmember Okimoto this evening? Anyone online? Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Council District Two, Kelly?
Aloha, Chair and members of the board. Kelly Anaya from Councilmember Matt Wires' office. So like Director Castle had mentioned earlier about the Honolulu Zoo being nominated. We do need your votes, so I did include a QR code that will take you right to the voting page. Also, a QR code for a homeless info briefing that Councilmember had in his committee meeting last week. If you want to go ahead and just take a look at that, you can go ahead and fast forward to the forty-two seventeen point on the video. And then lastly, I believe Teresa, or excuse me, Board Member Kuehu, had asked about the drainage regarding on Waikau Streets. So the Stormwater Quality Division did do a site inspection, and it was deemed that it is private property. So, so they were, the self-storage was notified and a warning letter was sent. It's just a warning letter, though, because there was no blockage to the city portion of the drain. So they, they can't really do anything about that. But the self-storage did say that they were gonna have their maintenance crew maintain the, that area on, on a regular basis. So hopefully, they'll stick to that. I have a number here, if, you know, it does continue to get blocked. You can call the Stormwater Quality Complaints Line at seven six eight three two four seven, or you can email them at swqcomplaints@honolulu.gov. And then also be sending it to Dylan as well, so you can hold that for your records. And if you have any questions for Councilmember, take them back.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions for Councilmember Wires' office this evening? Anyone online? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you for having me.
Do we have anybody on from Senator Delacruz's office on? Nope. Okay, that will move on to District Thirty-Eight, Representative Matsumoto.
Luckily, we distributed these already. Okay, Chair Hazama, members of the board, and members of the public. So the first one I'm gonna have you look at is this one, looks like this. This is our neighborhood board update. So just, not to take up too much time, but I was really, really happy. I, every day, a different legislator gives her invocation. And my invocation for the House was on Friday, and both of my kids just happened to have a Teacher Institute Day that day. So it was wonderful that I got to share the invocation with my children. But in our newsletter, there's just a lot of updates on the different events we did. We had a booth at the Character Counts Fair. There's also a lot of updates. I also have a vote for the Honolulu Zoo. If you look at the bottom, there's a little paw with a QR code. That's how you can get to the place to vote. We figured it might be fun with the QR code, switch it up a little bit. Also got to go to Mililani, we're here at Mililani Maoka. They had their, their art gallery, got to do some art with them. Just did a jump rope performance for them last week. And then, of course, there's a lot of different things that we did at the Capitol Ag Day. There's a CSG breakfast. I'm a member of the Women's Legislative Caucus. I'm their co-convenor, along with Rep Ichiyama in the house. And so we shared our legislative bill package. And of course, there's a lot of other things going on. The one thing I did want to highlight, if you see the Get Involved on the very last page on how to submit testimony, we worked really hard to put together a video to take people step by step on how to submit testimony. It kind of is like a Hawaiian airline safety video. I will admit, sometimes it's, there are portions there that's a little cheesy, but it's a really clear step by step process on how to testify. And as we're still in the middle of the legislative process, there's a lot of time to still testify on bills. So please use that video, and please share it with everybody else as well. This next handout that you have, if you live in District Thirty-Eight, you will be getting it in the mail in the next week and a half, hopefully. That is the goal, as soon as it comes back for the printers. But as you see here, we have two town halls. We have a personal safety and disaster preparedness town hall, March fourteenth here, from six to eight, and hoping to partner with my area legislators as well on this. So we'll have the Honolulu Police Department, the Fire Department, DOFA, the State Department of Transportation, and they'll be presenting on important topics affecting Mililani. Along with that, I just wanted to mention Chair Hazama and I were able to do a mini-site visit with Castle and Cook and DOT to look at a possible emergency exit road for Mililani Maoka. We'll have updates on that as we go through. DOT is working with the city right now to come up with a plan to have an emergency exit. So we're hoping for a two-lane emergency exit down below by the park and ride. The next would be our Legislative Update Town Hall. That will be April 12th, and that's at Mililani District Park from six to eight. That's gonna be going over bills that are moving through the legislature. Kind of, we're moving towards the end, so a great time to get input on some of those controversial bills that are moving through. Allow people to ask questions and be able to have some breakout sessions as well. I'd also like to mention, we're doing our Capitol Talking Tour. We had it back in October during fall break, and we had a hundred people sign up to go to our Talking Tour. And so we're gonna be doing it again, this time during spring break. So again, if you have students, you can come to the Capitol. But what'll be fun this year is we're actually in session versus in October, there is nobody there. So be able to, be able to see committees as well as be on, in the chamber and the gallery. So please mark your calendars and come to our Talking Tour. That's Thursday, March 21st, from ten to twelve thirty. And then on the inside is our, our bill packages. What I talked about earlier with those main topics based off of the, the top issues that people say, said were affecting them. So of course, we have cost of living. First, I'm not gonna go through each of the bills, because that's going to take a lot of time. But we have in our housing package, two of my housing bills are still moving. So I'm just gonna cover those, the Individual Housing Account Program. So what's wonderful about this bill is it's a program that already exists. We're not creating anything new. But currently, it's like I use pre-tax dollars to save up for a down payment. So it's kind of like if you have the Island Flex Plan, you can have pre-tax dollars for childcare or for healthcare. But currently, the annual cap is $5,000, and it hasn't been adjusted since the nineties. So the bill, all this bill does is raise it to $20,000 a year for single and, or $40,000 a year for double filers, and that's being able to save up quicker. And it has a cap of $200,000 versus the current cap of $20,000, which again, $20,000 is not gonna get you a down payment anywhere in Hawaii. So that is the bill that is going to finance. And then also, the other bill is HB 2790, and this is reactivating the Hula May Program for first-time homebuyers. The last time this program was used was in 2013. Full disclosure, my husband and I used the Hula May Program to buy our house that we live in now. It was a wonderful program for first-time homebuyers because we were locked in at a 2.95 interest rate. And also, they had education that went with it. You had to go to courses in order to get the loan, and you have to live in your house for 10 years. So those are the two bills that are still moving. We have our crime and safety bills. There's two bills here, and we also have resolutions. I had community members ask for a resolution for a police substation as well as the Mililani Maoka Emergency Road, so those are included in there. Government transparency, we have bills, two bills there in homelessness. We have relating to housing as well as some mental health bills. And then at the bottom, you'll see these constituent requests. And so I do want to highlight, make sure you take time to look at those. When you send your survey, and we did ask, what is the most important issue to you? What bill would you like to introduce? And based on what was written in, we were able to take some of those bills and actually introduce them. So I do want to encourage people, when we send out those surveys, it really does make a difference when you take the time to fill them out. And a few people actually called our office with bill ideas, and those bills got put in as well. So with that, that is the, that is the end of my report. I could go on for a really long time, but I'll stop it there, if there's any questions.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions? Go ahead, Alice.
I think it is.
All right. I just wanted to thank you and, and thank whoever, but I, I enjoyed the har.
Workshops?
Learning how to testify, learning how to read bills, learning how to do everything. I participated in, I think there were three workshops, and I found it very, very, very good.
Nice, and you bring up a good point, Alice, because those workshops are also recorded and available online. So if you miss the actual workshops, everybody, you can go back and you can watch those. And you're right, it really is helpful on how to get involved in the legislative process. Measure tracking's a big thing. I'll be working on that video next.
Okay, any other questions for Lauren? Anybody online? Oh, Stephen, go ahead.
Thank you. Representative Matsumoto, Steve Melendez here. I have a quick question for you. Seen in the media, a fair amount of publicity, if you will, concerning marijuana legalization. And yet, last week, there's an overwhelming rejection of that, if you will, at Mission Building adjacent to Honolulu Hali. A lot of dignitaries there, a lot of officials, a lot of public there. So my question is, if you can use a snapshot of that bill at this point?
Can you use a snapshot of the mailer? Is that the question?
No, no, that marijuana bill.
Oh, a snapshot of marijuana, so that is.
Yeah, what's the status of that?
So that's currently in the Senate right now, and it passed out of that committee. It hasn't come to the House yet. Crossover happens on, in the first week of March. And so if that bill passes, on March 7th, thank you, that, see, we're still in that first week, March 7th, the seventh day, is when crossover happens. So if that bill passes through the Senate, once it goes through the floor of the Senate, then it will be coming over to the House. If you do look on the survey, I did ask the question, should Hawaii legalize recreational marijuana? There was 214 responses in opposition, fifty-three in support, and thirty-six undecided in the survey that we gave to Mililani and Mililani Maoka. Because I, in the pre-session, recognized that that was gonna be a big issue this session. If you have any strong feelings and opinions, please feel free to call my office at 586-9490, or feel free to email us as well as at repmatsumoto@capitol.hawaii.gov.
Okay, any other questions? Stephen, you have one more? Nope, okay. Any else online?
Okay, so just, I would highly encourage the community as well as the board to go out to the March fourteenth emergency meeting, as well as our area legislators. This emergency access road for us has been in the works now for almost fifteen years, probably a little bit longer. And it took the wildfires to kind of, no pun intended, but ignite all of us to kind of resurface this whole issue again. So I, Matsumoto did coordinate a meeting with DOT as well as Castle and Cook. We thought we could use that land, but that was just my idea, that that wasn't gonna work out, so. But we, I think we have an option now where we can move forward. I, I know DOT did send a representative to our meeting this evening, so.
You didn't say anything?
This issue has been very important for us for a long, long time. So hopefully, we have positive movement now. We also have a possible way of, of actually getting the funding done and getting this out there, so. And that's all gonna be discussed in, in probably a lot more detail in the March fourteenth meeting. So if you guys can make it, please, please come out to that meeting, so.
Absolutely. I talked with Director Sniffin today, and he's been working with the city. They're working on, it's not the exact route that we thought we were gonna do when we had the site visit, but because the freeway is right there behind the, behind the park, they're working on an agreement with the city right now to have an easement. So those conversations have already started. We thought we had to have a big meeting with the mayor and many other officials, and it's, we're hoping it can go just through DOT and DTS and parks in the city. So we're hoping, I'll give you an update for you there. And Director Sniffin will be present, or one of his representatives, at that March fourteenth meeting. So as many people that can come out, I think that would be really helpful to show support for, and the importance of, of that road. And if I may, I just forgot two other things. I did want to also mention, there's one more of my bills that are moving through the legislature with the Women's Legislative Caucus for human trafficking. So that bill is passed through, and it will be heading to FIN. And the other bill that didn't pass, but I wanted to highlight, is one of the biggest requests we had when we sent that survey out was for school safety. And so we had our bill relating to education to have an emergency management plan for every school. It got heard in education. It ended up being deferred, but hopefully, something like that can continue on again. But I just wanted to mention that because I think that was something that was really, really important when we sent out those surveys, and many people wrote in that that was an important issue for them to introduce. Okay, now I'm done.
All right, thank you. All right, District Forty-Six, Representative Perusso.
Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and community members.
Aloha again, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members and community members. Um I wanted to say, first start off by saying mahalo to the community member who brought up HB fifteen thirty-seven and the concerns um he had with in regards to that bill. So I just wanna, for those who are not familiar with that bill, so that measure focuses on capturing non-owner occupied investment properties and it doesn't target, it does not apply to homeowners um a homeowner's primary residence. And the reason why this bill has come up again, so it was first introduced in twenty eighteen, but it's come up again because our, my boss, Representative Perusso realizes that there's a chronic underfunding of our public education system. And this is one way to address it, um so we encourage this kind of dialogue, any means to help push this bill forward and improve the bill so that we can start funding our public education, our public schools. Um so DOE all the way to the university system, um this is the kind of dialogue that we would want. Um so we highly encourage that engagement, especially as the bill moves forward into the committee on finance. Um but I wanted to go back to my slideshow, cuz I just had two different slides that I wanted to highlight um regarding some events that are coming up, um and that's regarded in regards to the disaster preparedness informational briefing that I shared earlier. Let's see if this shares it. Okay, so the disaster uh preparedness informational briefing, again, it's on March fourth and it's gonna be on Zoom, so I'll put this information um in the chat, so you folks can uh save it if you folks are available next Monday. Um and then the next one is a progressive budget teach-in, so um my boss as well as a few other cosponsoring legislators are gonna be hosting a teach-in um on March second at the, tentatively gonna be held at the Hawaii State Capitol, although if that changes, we'll let you know. We're hosting um experts from the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities who will be helping to demystify and like help um educate the community on the budgeting process of the Hawaii State Legislature. Um so if you folks are available for that, that's in two weekends. And that is all that I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Representative Perusso this evening? Anyone online? Okay, thank you. All right, District Thirty-Seven, Representative Lachika, Trish.
Again, everyone, um I already shared my newsletter, so I'll mostly stand on my report, um it's been a very busy session. Um the House has heard over about six hundred bills already and then been having a lot of meetings with the DOE. As you know, you know, we have been, there has been underfunding, but there also has been a lot of mismanagement of some of the funding and so we're we're particularly on the lapsing of CIP funds, so four hundred sixty-nine million of which were lapses in what would have been um projects allocated to our schools. And so looking into um the operations of that and how, you know, they're um basically restructuring some of that work. Um and then um just wanted to highlight in the newsletter, there is a Moolelo Ahapoa mural at the community garden by the Milani High School. So I don't know if you know, but they folks, um at least Principal Murphy likes to refer to that corner as the power porter of Millilani. The corners, when you drive down the beautiful, you know, um tree monkey pod like tree line street and then you see the community garden. So the idea is really make this beautiful and one of this is just honoring the history of our land um of the landscape of Waipio and Millilani. And um I was there when we blessed the mural and um I'm actually neighbors with Keaholani Whoopi Hare, who's the nineteen ninety grad and she and her husband along with Millilani High School students put the mural together. So it was a, it was great to be able to experience that. Um the only thing I would probably highlight in the legislative package that I didn't mention earlier. The first thing was um, so most of these bills, I think about ten or so bills are still alive in my package. Um one would be to look at a two-year pilot program with the Executive Office on Aging, it's called Senior Priority Lanes. But what it would really do is establish um a priority lane for seniors sixty-five or older as well as create online phone lines, priority phone lines and online scheduling. Um it was, I think it's good to have this initial discussion, but with, you know, a lot of our budgetary kind of constraints and restrictions this year. Any new initiatives um will be really difficult to fund this year because of priority is Lahaina and rebuilding as well as a lot of hundreds of millions that has to go into hazard pay from the pandemic. Um so anything that probably has appropriation requests in them might have a difficult chance, but as you all know, you know, testimony does help, any type of advocacy does help. So thank you for um voting on the opportunity to submit testimony in the future.
Thank you, any questions for Representative Lachika's office this evening, anyone online? Thank you Trish.
Oh sorry, one last update, one last update, I forgot, the phone number that I shared last time for Kaila Ho West, so I had a meeting with them last week, they came to my office. But I think I missed one number, so this is the correct number and it's a texting, twenty-four seven text or call for service. So they are our new homeless um service provider in the area, they're actually servicing somebody in Waipio Acres right now. They're still struggling with um uh fully getting fully staffed, but they will have a North Shore team, a central Oahu, central Oahu team and a Kapale like Leeward team.
Okay, but they're handling their phone calls through this this number.
Yeah, so if you see anything you wanna report, um somebody who, you know, might need service, you can send a picture or text and then it goes through their system and then it gets sent to all of their like coordinators, field coordinators. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, board members, we move on to approval of our board minutes from our January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four regular board meeting. Any comments or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, any objections to adopting the minutes? Any abstentions? Seeing none, the minutes are adopted by unanimous consent, moving on to reports, Patsy Teemink, Central Oahu Regional Park.
Um they have uh a lot of maintenance projects going on right now, specifically uh they're working on improving the ball fields. So if you have any kids that are um playing ball out there, they are gonna have a lot of construction going on, so just be aware of that.
Okay, thank you, I'm moving on to committee reports, uh education, Stephen, you have a report this evening?
Um yes, I do, thank you, I wanna share with you, I emailed it to uh all the board members that uh Anna has decided to be our co-chair and she'll be handling reporting for the elementary schools. And then I do have a report I'd like to share screen.
Hey, go ahead.
Thank you very much, uh. Okay, this is the report from Milani Middle School, I'm gonna continue doing the reporting, the Milani Middle School. And then Ms. Anna Hudson will be handling the coat as a co-chair for the Education Committee to replace what Shelby was doing with us before. Uh these are the principal, uh he was there tonight, Principal Thomas Shero, these are the vice uh the assistant principals, pardon me. And uh Mr. Han, that was with us here last month, he's uh came back again out of uh retirement. He is again the assistant principal there, which is great. Uh one item here concerning the high interest programs, they have thirty high interest programs going on currently at the school. They're after school programs, they have a a number of uh subjects, Character Counts, Yearbook, eSports, robotics, et cetera. So in order to see what are currently available, the schedule is available at the administration front office or the home homeroom. Uh the monthly community meetings for the uh parent teacher for the for the PTSO and for the SEC are occurring on the second Tuesday of the month, PTSO is at five o'clock, SEC meeting is at six o'clock in the administration conference room. This is the schedule for uh the current schedule for the school, the rest of the month, and then this is the the schedule for the the uh school year, making note of this in March, that uh in March, uh four through seven, they do have the accreditation coming through. And uh then we do have school break, March eighteen, and then March twenty-sixth, Whewill Day, March twenty-ninth is Good Friday. Uh I wanna mention about the accreditation, the uh Milani Middle School has done great in accreditation, I was part of the team earlier. Uh I spent ten years on the boards for the school, five years for the PTSO and five for the SEC, they've done a great, great job, they were highly recommended. And uh that is my report, so if there's any questions, I'll take questions now.
Okay, thank you, so for the education, vice chairs, can you email me to tell me what schools you guys are responsible for? I kinda know. Okay. Thank you, moving on to uh military and civil defense.
No report.
No report.
Planning, permitting and zoning.
No report.
Okay, transportation, I don't have any recognition, service awards, Alice, you have anything? Okay, seeing none, uh again, this is a reminder, uh we will be in recess in March. And our next board meeting will be April sixteen, twenty twenty-four, seven PM here at Milani Malka Elementary as well as on WebEx. Anybody else have any announcements this evening? Anyone online? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.